Okay, we'll call to order the Planning Commission meeting of Wednesday, June 25th, 2005, at 7:00 PM. Ms. Martinez, can you take the role?
Chair Quilty, excused, Vice Chair Hasty.
Here.
Commissioner Grego.
Here.
Commissioner Heitman.
Here.
And Commissioner Legere.
Here.
Okay. You now stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, oral communications. At this time, any member from the audience may address the Planning Commission. Do we have any? No? Okay, we'll move on from that. Consent calendar. All consent calendar items can, may be acted upon on one motion unless a planning commissioner requests separate action on a specific item. Can I entertain a motion to approve the May 28th, 2025? No, I'm sorry, I'm gonna just approve the consent calendar, right? Make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
I'll make the motion to approve the consent calendar.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Next on the agenda is public hearing. Public hearing on the zoning ordinance amendment, ZOA 2502, Regulation of Group Homes and Sober Living. Consideration of zoning ordinance amendment and amendment to Title V Business Licenses and Regulations in Title 17 zoning of the Los Alamos Municipal Code concerning the regulation of group homes and sober livings. Do we have a report?
Yes, thank you, commissioners. I'll be presenting this evening. Before the Planning Commission for consideration is a proposed amendment to the Los Alamos Municipal Code, which would add zoning controls and regulations for group home and sober living facilities. A group home is defined to be a facility used as a supportive living environment for persons who are considered disabled under state and federal law. A sober living home is a subset of group homes. That's defined to be a group home for persons recovering from drug or alcohol addiction and are considered disabled under state and federal law. And just to reiterate that point, for purposes of state and federal law, any individual who's recovering from a substance abuse issue, who's actually in recovery and abstaining from use, is qualified as having a disability for purposes of protection under state and federal laws. So, this ordinance itself has been prepared in response to an increase in the number of single and multifamily residences that are being utilized for alcohol and drug recovery facilities. This increase has been seen across the state. It's been seen in the County of Orange largely. Has not, to my knowledge, become a market problem in the city of Los Alamos. However, we have received concerns from residents who want to make sure that this is something that's being looked at in interest. So, the ordinance again is being brought forward to try to implement nondiscriminatory zoning controls and business regulations to address these uses. The ordinance itself is intended to address secondary impacts that are frequently associated with these types of uses, which can include excessive noise, parking issues, excessive secondhand smoke, or over-concentration of facilities and neighborhoods. Beyond that, however, the ordinance as drafted is also intended, and I think is worth mentioning, that there's a secondary, a secondary interest here in purpose, and that is to ensure that the sober living facilities that may locate in the city of Los Alamos do in fact provide a supportive and compassionate environment for persons in recovery. You all may, are likely aware that this is an issue that has been litigated for quite some time. The city of Costa Mesa had long been embroiled in legal action concerning their efforts to regulate these types of uses. That was a battle that drug through the trial courts for, you know, I would say approximately a decade into a toll of several millions, if not tens of millions of dollars in legal expenses to try to, to move forward with their ordinance. The city had been tracking that, as had others throughout the county, and most recently, there's a Ninth Circuit decision which upheld the city of Costa Mesa's ordinance. So, that's worth you mentioning, mentioning in the sense that the ordinance you are looking at this evening largely tracks the approach and structure of the Costa Mesa ordinance, which has been reviewed by the court and upheld as being defensible. And so, so that's, you know, the approach we took to try to do something that we know has been legally vetted to the extent possible and is consistent with not only the enactment of Costa Mesa, but also other ordinances that are making their way through surrounding jurisdictions or have already been enacted by neighboring jurisdictions as of today. We believe that the proposed amendments are reasonable and nondiscriminatory and will help preserve the residential character of Los Alamos's residential districts while providing persons with disabilities an equal opportunity to comfortably reside in a residential environment. In terms of the structure of the proposed regulations, group homes with six or less residents in the R1, R2, R3, and MH zoning districts would be allowed only upon approval of a special use permit. That would be approved by the director, Director of Community Development here. Group homes with seven or more residents would be outright prohibited in R1. So, the only group home that would even be, have the potential for locating in an R1 zone would have less than six occupants, not including the house manager. So, that's prohibition on seven or more in the R1. Group homes with seven or more residents in the R2, R3, and MH zones could only be approved with a conditional use permit, which would come before the Planning Commission and a notice public hearing. And as you'll see, there's the Title V regulations included within this ordinance, which imposes, or enacts a secondary layer of control and regulation. And that's the requirement that an operator's permit be issued for these larger, seven-plus group home uses that would come through the city. So, some of the requirements that would be enacted by this ordinance, notable ones at least, would be that there must be a 650-foot separation between like facilities. I believe it's, it's either in the staff report or in the body of the ordinance itself, recitals that talks to potential institutionalization of residential neighborhoods. What we're talking about there is really an over-concentration of these types of uses within one particular neighborhood. Drawing back to the Costa Mesa example, I forget the exact numbers, but they had a situation where you have one small cul-de-sac or dead-end street that has five residential structures dedicated to nothing other than recovery services, and then, and then a couple other state licensed facilities, all in the same area. So, so that speaks to the desire of retaining and maintaining a nice residential character throughout the city's residential zoning districts, is that, you know, operate it effectively and responsibly. These uses can go into a neighborhood and it's, you know, a positive thing all around, but it is potentially detrimental to the character of a residential neighborhood if you have a significant number of these uses concentrated in one area. A few of the other requirements would be that all occupants of the home, other than the house manager, would be required to actively participate in legitimate recovery programs while they're at the home. So, that could be something like a seven-step program, like Alcoholics Anonymous, and so on and so forth. There'd be restrictions and screening, live scan screening of the house managers and operators of the business to make sure that individuals who are convicted of sex offenses or violent felonies, narcotic offenses and so forth, would not be permitted to act as an owner, operator, or a staff member of these homes. Those house managers, in addition, are required to actually be onsite at the facility. I'm using the term facility, but again, really, this is a residence. It's a residential structure occupied by up to six, or in some cases, seven or more individuals who are enrolled in these programs. But nonetheless, those residences would have to have an onsite house manager who's on, on the premises 24/7 to make sure that house rules are adhered to, and if there's any issues, have someone who's accountable to try to address potential problems. There's a, there'd be a prohibition on the use of alcohol or non-prescription drugs while you reside at the home, for obvious reasons. And then, the city would also request, when processing these applications, to obtain a fair amount of documentation from the applicant to understand what their operations would look like. So, some examples of that are, we would be asking for, you know, what's called a good neighbor policy, how they intend to interact with the surrounding community, how they intend to address problems that may come up. You know, we talked about the things like noise, or trash, or people being out late at night causing, you know, arguably nuisances for their neighbors who, who may have different schedules, things like that. They would also ask for copies of the house rules and regulations, copies of the intake procedures that the organization utilizes, and also copies of a relapse policy. We want to know what happens if, you know, there's the rule that someone cannot be using alcohol or non-prescription drugs while they're in the home. What happens if somebody does relapse? How is that handled responsibly by, by the operator? So, so that's an overview of some of the requirements that would be imposed, aside from the zoning requirement of distance and so forth. The, Tom, I don't believe we have any known sober living facilities in the city, but nonetheless, there is language in the ordinance that, that makes it clear that, to the extent there were any existing uses, they would not be grandfathered in as a permissible use. There's an amortization period, which would require anyone who is in operation today to come into the city and apply for these approvals and to show that they comply with the newly enacted zoning requirements within a specified period of time. So, that's, that's an overview of what's in the ordinance. Again, we think, we think that they're, you know, they are modeled after provisions that have been tested by the courts and upheld. And we do think that they're nondiscriminatory in an effective way to, to balance, you know, the needs of folks who would seek the benefits of a recovery program with the desire of the residents of the city to maintain the residential character of their neighborhoods. So, I'll conclude with that, and if there's any questions, I'd be happy to, to address them.
Sure. You want to open it up for questions? Commissioner Grego, do you have any?
Are these sober living homes voluntarily entered into, or are they court ordered for the residents? Or does, is there any distinction made there?
The residents would, so you would not be placed in these homes through a court order. I suppose it's possible you have a court order or a condition.
Saying you have to.
A probation saying you should enroll or actively participate in recovery, but it wouldn't be a direct pipeline from the courts to these homes. I think the homes, in general, as I understand it, are operated by private entities who offer the services to folks who, for whatever reason, are looking for that type of environment, whether that's.
Yeah, generally, someone will come out of rehab, and then they'll be required to stay at a sober living home for so much time. That might be the court ordered part, but they're not court ordered to go to this specific home, if that makes sense. Or, or what, any home. They just have to be in a sober environment, is what the requirement usually is.
Yeah, and I think there's also, you know, a number of individuals who voluntarily choose to seek out a recovery program, who are not doing it as a result of any sort of legal issue.
Or court ordered.
Right.
That's my only question.
Okay. Commissioner Legere?
I had a couple. So, when I was looking at this, a proposed ordinance excludes state licensed care facilities, but Commissioner Hasty just said that many of these facilities are privately operated. And other than, right, other than filing for approval with the Director of Community Development, is there any other process through which these facilities would be, essentially would be approved or would be licensed?
No, and in a sense, that's why we're trying to put this forward, the exemption for state licensed facilities, because there's certain preemption issues there, where, where a facility that's operating under the guidance of the state in pursuit of some sort of state licensed approval or permit, the city's not necessarily in a position to try to regulate or get in the mix with controlling those uses. However, the group homes, one of the defining characteristics is that they're not providing, you know, onsite medical treatment or more intensive therapies that would require a state license. It's simply meant to be a supportive environment for individuals who are, you know, going through recovery and maybe participating, or in this case, would be required to participate in a recognized, like, seven-step program, but that's not, you know, a state licensed mode of recovery. That's something different. And so, that provides the opening for municipalities to get involved in the regulation.
And then, the only other question I had was, you know, if we are talking about a facility that's going to be in a residential area, and we're going to be having people who are transported, because if I read this right, transportation is up to the person who's actually attending these, right, or is going to be in these facilities. That could be a lot of traffic coming in and out of residential areas, right, or, you know, wherever these, wherever these facilities are going to be housed. Is there any, who's going to be monitoring, who's going to be regulating the activity around the home, right? Is, is it going to be Los Alamos Police? Is it up to the facilities? You know, who ultimately, if something, if something, if there is a need for, right, for authorities to intervene, whose responsibility would that be?
Yeah, I think the answer, to some extent, is both, insofar as the operator has a, presumably has an interest in maintaining whatever entitlements or, or business regulation license, in this case, an operator's permit, that they have. The operator would have an interest in making sure that they're complying with all applicable rules and not causing problems for their neighbors. But ultimately, once we have these rules enacted, it opens up the possibility of code enforcement by the city and involvement from the PD and code enforcement to make sure that issues are not being created with these uses.
Okay. And then, the last question I had. Do we have any type of, any type of data, any type of numbers, anything that we can use? Do we know what the average, what the average stay is for someone who's in a sober care facility, right, someone who's, who is, in fact, in recovery? Do we know how long they stay in these homes? Do we have any idea? You know, what are, what are the steps that would follow this, right? How is someone then known, right, how is someone then approved, right, that they, right, can now move back into, right, move out of that facility? Do we have any, right, do we have any idea how long the average stay is?
My, I can get back to you with a more specific answer to that, but my understanding is that these programs are typically 60 to 90 days.
Okay.
And that, you know, unfortunately, there's some folks who may not make it that whole time, if they fall out of the program.
Thank you. That's all. Okay. Commissioner Heitman?
Yes, I have two questions. The first one is, you men, you mentioned that the house manager will go through a live scan to make sure that they're not a sex offender, violent offender, violent felon, or drug dealer. Is there a similar screen for the participants of the program?
We will receive information about the participants, but the participants themselves would not be subject to a live scan.
And then, the other question is, is there any type of cap or percentage that you'll be placing on how many homes can be in the city?
There's not a specified cap, but I think part of the intent behind the 650 distance requirement is that you, smarter minds than me, Tom and Planning, would be able to figure out what that could potentially work out to, depending on where, where that first point is drawn.
So, it's approximately, given the, given the different size of lots in the neighborhood, right, and where I am, it's about nine houses, right, nine residential units. That's 650 feet, it's about nine units.
All right.
And that's single family, too, right?
That's correct.
So, there could be more density in, in other areas if these went into multifamily developments, but.
Those are my only questions.
Okay, great. All right, I had one question. You mentioned Costa Mesa, how they've gone through this. I, I have followed that. Have they been successful in their ordinances with the, with the six or less? Because I know that you're saying that six or less cannot go into a residential R1, right? I'm sorry, six or, I said that wrong. It's the opposite, yeah.
It's six, six or less would be permitted in the R1 zone.
Correct.
Anything above that would not be.
Right.
In the R1. And then, once you go to more intense zoning districts, you're allowed to.
Correct. Have they been, do you know if they've been successful in enforcing that?
These provisions were in the Costa Mesa ordinance that was, went up and reviewed, so they didn't, they, they weren't pushed back and they didn't lose on that issue. So, again, we're, we're trying to structure it on what courts have reviewed, courts have heard argument on, and ultimately, in this case, have agreed that it was acceptable.
Yeah, I could see that could be a challenge, because, you know, people want to, a business wants to pop as many people in there as they can. And they usually go two to a room, so you add that up, it starts to add up. But the R1, that's good if it's enforceable, so that's good. The other question I had was, and it kind of answers it, because the R1 would be less, but we do have, with the current, you know, ADU allowances now that the state allows, you know, on a property, you could, you know, theoretically, in a single-family property, you could have two duplexes and two junior ADUs. Does this, say someone did that, would that property be considered, because the state considers that as separate units? Would this consider it separate units? And I could do six here and six there. I know it's a little tricky question, but.
So, so there is one provision related to ADUs that says you cannot use an ADU as a, as a group home.
Oh.
Unless the primary residence is, is dedicated to that use also. So, to the extent you have any uses related to sober living or group homes in an ADU, it would have to be tied to the primary residence. You wouldn't be able to just say, hey, I'm going to use the front house as a rental property, but I've got someone interested in operating a, a group home out of the back in the ADU.
Right.
So, it would be, it would be one permit.
Okay, yeah, that was my question.
Yeah.
If you had two, you know, I could do six here, six here.
Yeah, no, the, the count was, so if you had an ADU and a, and a primary residence that you were operating a group home out of, and it's R1, and you say you want to put six in the front, six in the back, that would, the answer there is no, because by my math, that's 12. And so, you get to six, even if it's split between the ADU and then the primary.
Yeah, my only concern was the way the state looks at ADUs. They tend to.
Sure.
You could separate those and sell them separate. So, that's where it gets a little sticky. So, okay, but that's good. Let's see, the only other thing, I did see in there that the parking, you know, all the park, because usually the problem, the, the two main problems with these, the sober living facilities are parking and smoking. Those are usually the two. So, I think with your, you're right, if you have that good neighbor policy, I think that's great. You can, you can talk about both of those. This does say that they have to park within 500 feet of the home, so that's good. You know, good neighbor policies, you know, you can't work on cars in the front. You know, all these good things can go into that, which I think is a great way to approach that. So, I think that's good. So, and then, our code enforcement obviously would be taking care of the, of the, of the parking, right? Okay. One more question. Oh, I know what it was. So, this specifically takes care of sober living homes and facilities. Do we have anything similar? You know, it may not fall under this, because like, for residential care, like, if you have elderly care or other mental illness, there's mental illness homes, things like that. Are those separate? Because most of those are probably, like, state-funded or getting money from the state? Or do we have any kind of ordinance on those? Because you could theoretically have a residential home and a sober living, and then, you know, something else next to it.
Yeah, I, I'm not sure offhand how our code treats those types of uses. Tom, Tom may have a better idea.
We have transitional and supportive housing and stuff like that. We don't have any, but, other than, we do have, you know, shelters in the town.
Correct. I guess the one I'm looking at, there's some, I know my wife's grandmother went to one where she was kind of in between being able to, she was too, too well for a convalescent, but not well enough to go home. And there's a lot of places that have facilities with, you know, five, six, seven, eight people in there.
Yeah.
And they can care for them. I didn't know if those were regulated through the city.
They are. We, we don't have any right now.
Okay.
And, and Tom, are those permitted in the R1? I mean, sorry, I don't mean to add questions to the conversation.
No, I just think, my point was, if we're going to look at this, it might be willing, you mean, want to look at?
Yes.
Those as well at the same, you know, getting ahead of the game.
So, they're permitted in R1.
Yeah, and these are, those are covered, you know, by state laws as well.
Okay.
They were, they were about six years ago, we went through those the same way we're going through this.
Okay, I guess that was my question. So, there is something in there about those.
Yeah.
Okay. Which is perfect. I just didn't want to see us go through this without going through the other. Okay, so, any more questions?
I have a subsequent question, actually.
Go ahead.
Can you provide us, or me, with a citation for the Costa Mesa case?
Uh, let's see if I have it working here. I have, I have the name, but not a pin site offhand. We might be able to Google that, but it was, the name of the case is the Ohio Health, Ohio House LLC v. City of Costa Mesa.
Okay. And did, that's Ninth Circuit?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
A pleasure.
Okay, so where are we at here? So, I guess before we did, did I have to open the public hearing before I did that?
Yes, please.
Now, or?
At some point, we'll need to open the public hearing, close it, and then have additional deliberation.
All right. So, I have a good point for this now. So, we'll open the public hearing on zoning ordinance amendment, ZOA 2502. Close the public hearing? Not seeing any. Close the public hearing. So, can we entertain a motion now?
I move to approve and adopt resolution number 2025-02, entitled, "A Resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Los Alamos, California, recommending the City Council to adopt zoning ordinance amendment, ZOA 25-02, ordinance number 205, 2025-TBD, adding, sorry, I lost my page here. Sorry. Adding Chapter 5.52, Group Homes, and Section 7.28290, Group Homes, to the Los Alamos Municipal Code, and amending Section 17.08.020, Allowed Uses and Permit Requirements for Residential Zones of the Los Alamos Municipal Code."
Okay, do I have a second?
Yes.
Seconded by Commissioner Grego. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Now, I lost my place. Okay, do we have? So, that was the discussion. Staff report? That was the staff report. Items from the Development Services Department.
Yes, thank you, Vice Chair Hasty and Planning Commission. So, I do have a few announcements to share, one of which has been recently, large amount of inquiry concerning 3rd of July, the fireworks spectacular that Recreation puts on annually at the base. So, just to share that unfortunately, the design, as it has been in the past years of that celebration, has changed. It's been reformatted. It is not canceled. The fireworks display will still continue, but the event itself, with the festivities taking place, that is open to the public for residents to come out to the base and enjoy, unfortunately, that has been reformatted. I do not want to necessarily go into too much detail, other than the fact that the information has been shared to the public as recently as this week. And a lot of information that you may have, either questions or concerns, can be forwarded over to the Recreation Team. It will be featured in the e-newsletter that comes out weekly starting tomorrow, so you'll be able to read up on that information. But the event itself, the fireworks display will still continue, just unfortunately in a different format. Along those lines, with the e-newsletter, you should, if not haven't seen or read about the upcoming project concerning the I-605 and the Cotella Avenue project, that's, that's soon to start. In fact, they've been staging and mobilizing, mobilizing out on Cotella, getting ready for. In fact, they've been staging and mobilizing out on Cotella, getting ready for a large amount of activity to take place after the 4th of July. So, July 7th is when you'll start to notice more activity out on Cotella, particularly west of, it's kind of Long Beach side on Willow, under the freeway. So, what you'll see there is, there's going to be demoing of the median, center median, and then restriping and reshifting the way that the traffic is designed to travel. So, that'll be one of the first things, and then they are, and I'd be happy to lead you to our e-newsletter, or ultimately, to the website, where it can direct you to the actual OCTA page. But there will be more information coming forward on on-ramp, off-ramp construction activity as well. And that'll be ramping up through, all through July, so it'll be taking place pretty soon. I would anticipate and recommend that Cotella will be impacted in some degree, and then the project itself is intended to be 18 months in length. So, you'll start to see activity this week, but upscale of activity in July, and that activity is actually nighttime work, so you'll just notice the difference, unfortunately. When you're traveling in the evening, it's just going to be loud and painful for a little bit, but it's all designed to be improved. The on-ramp, off-ramp on the 605, and then Cotella, with, I'm sure you remember, but there's also going to be bike lanes that are going to extend from Cotella through Willow to Long Beach, so just wanted to give you a heads-up on that. Previously, at a previous meeting, I know Vice Chair, Commissioner Hasty, wanted to get information on vacancies, so our Development Services Director either sent the email, or will be sending an email on that information, so I would look forward to that email with the information that was requested. So, that's underway. A few other announcements, and just reminders, Summer Concerts has been taking place now. It's going to be the third week, I believe, tomorrow night, and that's going to be on Pine Street from 6:30 to 8:00. It's an 80's tribute band, or cover band, I should say, that will be playing tomorrow night on Pine Street, so I'd invite you to come out. Effective July 1st, you should be noticing a slight increase in your trash rates, and that's par for the course annually, in July is when residents and businesses will notice an increase, and that has to do with Consumer Price Index, CPI increases, cost of living increases. Residents can still enjoy the lowest rates in Orange County as part of the agreement with UWS, so even though it is an increase, unfortunately, everything seems to be increasing in cost, it's still competitively lower than perhaps other neighboring cities. But just FYI, you shouldn't expect that in July. And then, lastly, the city is now excited to offer online parking permitting system, and so that launched this month, and that covers anything from parking permits to overnight permits, RVs, trailers, even trash, large trash containers for construction-related activities. So, what once was required to come in person through PD is now available online. So, if you haven't had the opportunity to set up an account, or at least look and see through the system, it's live, so you can do that now. That wraps up any concerns, or any questions, or comments that I may have on some of these items, but I'd be happy to take any questions afterwards, too. Thank you.
All right, Commissioners' Report, would you like to start?
I don't have anything to report, actually.
Anything tonight?
Nope.
Anybody else?
No.
Okay, with that, well, I'd like to say, big thank you to the city for moving forward with the fireworks. It's a big deal in the city, and I know with everything going on over at the base right now, it would have been easy to cancel them, so I do appreciate that. I think everyone's going to, whether it looks a little different, they're still going to appreciate it, so kudos for that. I will now entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I so move to adjourn the meeting.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Look it easy.
All right, nice job.